Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons come then. With glowing hearts we see the rise of true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Folks, record of attendance and councillor McLeod is absent with regrets. Moved and seconded, discussion? Yep, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Declaration of conflict of interest, anyone? Approval of agenda, additions or deletions? So we'll start with 10C. We will remove 10C, the water treatment plant cleaning, the lagoon cleaning, and we will go into Water Utility Meeting right after the council meeting. So we can take care of that appropriately. Additions, we were going to, I'll put this under 13A. Mariners Center. Thank you, appointments, yes. There it is. Anything else? Additions? Good. Hearing nothing else, can I have a motion? Move by councillor Barry, second by deputy. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, we're going to approve the minutes. Committee of the whole, June 13th. Councillor Don, councillor Cleveland, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay. So was that?
Since they did.
Yep. Okay, good. Thank you.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah. Now we're good. Yeah. So did I do the town council one? I did. Committee of the whole, June 26th. Deputy? Councillor Barry. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, June 26th, in camera. Councillor Don. Councillor Cleveland. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. And town council, June 26th. Deputy and councillor Cleveland. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, business arising. Close Clements Avenue. CAO?
Your worship, this is further to a discussion we had a few months back around doing a land trade. This portion of Clements Avenue, trading it for a portion of property on Stars Road further, further to the west. In order to do the transaction, it was determined that Clements Avenue may be an open street and therefore needs to be closed by policy. And so the solicitor prepared this document. So tonight, we've advertised a public hearing and so it would be appropriate to hear from the public if anyone wished to speak to this. And then once you've heard from the public, council can, could consider the policy statement as attached to the agenda.
Okay. So I will ask the folks here three times if you'd like to speak to this item agenda. And if you do wish to, you can come to the microphone. So with regard to the closure of portion of Clements Avenue, would anybody here like to speak to this? Would anyone like to speak to this item? And I'll ask a third time. Would anyone like to speak to this agenda item? Okay? Hearing none. So the next step, CAO, is? Okay. So, so we are, we are making a motion to accept it as it's stated. So deputy mayor? And councillor Don Barry? Okay. Any discussion, anyone? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. New business, fire station air cleaning tender results. CAO?
Your worship, the, the fire department tendered for an air cleaning system for the fire station Bay area. It was published and only one company submitted proposals, two proposals. Both proposals met the specifications for the project. No other company submitted a tender. Therefore, Atlantic Cleaning Specialists Limited will be awarded the project, or it's recommended they'll be awarded the project. The table shows the two proposals and they're, they're for two somewhat different systems that achieve the same end but by different means. And maybe rather than me try to interpret this, if I could ask the fire chief, your worship, to speak to it?
Thank you, chief.
Are there any questions or do you just want me to speak about both? There's two types of systems. There's one system, that's a general system that cleans all of the air in the whole Bay area. And then there's another type of system that takes the exhaust directly from the, the fire truck exhaust pipes. That system takes most, almost 100% of the exhaust from the, from the trucks. But it also lacks in taking away all the off-gassing and stuff from bunker gear, the equipment we have at fires, and all the off-gassing from the trucks after a fire. So the chiefs have looked at it and basically we decided we would like the, the one that goes on the roof that does the general air cleaning. Because that way we're getting rid of all the contaminants in the Bay area, not just the exhaust from the trucks. Also, the, the one that was taking the exhaust from the trucks had one general air cleaning system with it that was going to hang over top of the bunker gear room to help get rid of the, the off-gassing from the bunker gear in that area. But with the general, with the eight, I think there's eight in total for the one system. If it goes up, it'll work better for us. So that's why we're looking at that.
So this, we're going with the B, right? Okay. The, the B, the one with the, the eight air cleaning?
Yes, we're recommending the general air cleaning ones that go up on the ceiling. There's eight of them in succession. We're not recommending the taking it directly from the exhaust pipe.
I'm, I'm good with it if the chief's good. Okay. Yep, councillor Hood, second that? Or did you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, put your. Yep. Go ahead.
So chief, it's just $9,000 in the difference for the, what I'll call what seems to be the more enhanced one? Is that correct?
There, I don't think there's $9,000 difference. I think the, the, A, the first one, the first idea they have combines both, both one unit on the ceiling and, and the exhaust from the trucks. You have to combine those two. If you look down in the right-hand corner of the document itself, it gives you the actual overall price.
What's the total cost of it?
I, I don't have it in front of me right now.
So the, so A is 79,645 and the one we're recommending is 79,995. So, so the top one is install the $70,000 one and then install the general air cleaning at 8,600?
Yeah.
So it adds up to the seven, it's the same price for both of them?
Basically the same price.
For either one? Same price for either one?
Yeah, basically, yes.
All right, okay.
Good? Okay. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, the, one, one of the differences, and it's, it's not, it's not material, but one of the differences is that in the system that's being recommended, there's potential for higher ongoing maintenance costs. But that, we really won't know until we know the frequency for which the filters and so on have to be, have to be changed. So there is potential that it'll be higher maintenance, but you're talking about worst-case scenario, it looks like about $3,000 a year difference. So for, for a system that does a better general job.
Good. Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, chief. Police Advisory Board Amendment, first reading. Go ahead.
Looking for the amendment. This was adding a member? So your worship, at the, the last meeting when we were making our committee appointments, it was asked or requested by council that we increase the size of the, the police advisory board. And so the amendment to, to increase the size is attached here and I'm searching for it.
It's right on that, it's right here? Three members?
Yes, okay, so three. Right. Section 3.0 membership, so instead of having, um... Instead of having two citizen members, we'll have three citizen members appointed by the town, plus a member appointed by the, by the province, and two council members.
Okay. So really we're adding the extra citizen.
Right.
Councillor Hood?
Well, just a little bit technical, but why does it say nor employees of the municipality? I know it was sort of a municipality, but we aren't really... Why does it say nor employees of the town?
Only that amendment.
Yeah, we can change that.
For sure.
Given, given...
Oh, definitely. We don't ever want you to stop practicing law.
So tonight is first reading?
Yes. Go ahead.
So tonight is first reading of this bylaw. And so with the amendment to increase the number of citizen members to three and to make that correction from municipality to town, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve first reading and proceed to public hearing.
Okay. Second by councillor Barry. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. So the next meeting we do the public?
Next, we do the public hearing and then the second.
Okay. Okay, the water treatment plant came out. Council Advisory Committee, Committee of the Whole, deputy?
Thank you, your worship. I, this is from Committee of the Whole, June the 13th, and I think we just took care of the first one, from what I understand. Your worship, I make a motion that Mayor Mood, councillor Steve Barry, and the CAO develop a mandate for the proposed events committee.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship. This is motions from Committee of the Whole on June the 26th, 2019. I move that council approve the request for $1,500 to sponsor the Yarmouth Shark Scramble Shark replica and to include the Waterfront Development Corporation in the discussion.
Moved and seconded, you can wait. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council direct staff to arrange a presentation of the National Housing Strategy.
So moved, second by councillor Cleveland. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your motion, your worship, I move that council contribute up to $1,000 to host a tea for the Lieutenant Governor in Frost Park on August the 7th, 2019. And I believe you've already had some preliminary discussions on that and I think, did you go to Halifax?
I didn't go to Halifax for that.
Okay.
Yeah, or something else.
Okay.
Okay, motion, second by councillor Barry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council approve the request for $650 to sponsor the dairy industry of Yarmouth booklet.
Second by councillor Cleveland. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council contribute up to $750 to host a reception at Town Hall on September the 14th, 2019 for the Sarah Corning statue unveiling. And I think there is some news, your worship, on maybe some of the guests of honor, from what I hear?
I believe we have, we have a...
The ambassador?
We have the ambassador, yes. Actually, maybe a number of ambassadors.
Is it the ambassador designate, I think?
She is now, but she will be an ambassador within this month.
Okay.
And a number of other guests that, that, it's, it's really cool. You really are inviting the world and they're coming, so it's good. Yep, okay, so who seconded that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council send a letter to Nova Scotia Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal asking them to honor their commitment to the one-year notice on changes to provincial municipal financial arrangement.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I recommend that council explore the potential multi-use trail expansion along Stars Road extension to the Arcadia Corner intersection.
Second by councillor Barry. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, deputy. Okay. Planning Advisory, I don't think there was, wasn't a meeting. Yeah, reports for information. Okay, questions for committee chairs, anyone? So I have a couple. Go ahead.
Maybe to the new councillor Barry, I know that you had an events preliminary meeting and I saw a couple of posts on social media site, maybe councillor Steve, you can give us just a little overview on where we are and how you see it going from here.
So we met earlier in the week and just came up with a kind of rough outline, the mandate of what this events committee would be, kind of the broader scope of will it just be events or will it just be things that are happening on a regular basis? Could we develop a website? Who would upkeep this? Just basically a way to make sure the public knows that we are, what's going on in our town and just to be sure that things don't get missed. So basically, we're just moving forward with the mandate at the moment and once we come up with that, we'll be kind of up and running from there, I guess, so.
Yeah, and, and it will come back to committee of the whole. Because we're, we're developing policy. So yeah, it was a really good, it was a good meeting.
Broader scope, for sure, and kind of what we're doing. As opposed to just meeting to meet, I think it'll be on point once we do, so.
Good stuff. Thank you. I had a question for councillor Cleveland as the YASTA chair. The, the update on the Cape for Shu because we, YASTA is looking after that.
Thank you, your worship. What's happening right now in Cape for Shu is just the, the beginnings of getting things together. YASTA primarily was to be doing, taking control of marketing on that end. And so they're looking into a few other things. There's a website that's been developed, it hasn't been published yet. They made a presentation to the municipality, actually, a few days back. Also, they're, they're on a kind of a management scale, they're getting things going there. But I don't have much information about how they are doing at this point, at the very least, when it comes to their management end of things and how things are going that way. But while I have the microphone, I did also want to mention that YASTA, with everything that's been going on with the ferry, of course, there's been some necessity to kind of change direction there. We, YASTA primarily does a huge amount of advertising and investment in the New England market, that's kind of the plan. And so with, with the ferry on delay and there is hope that we can salvage a good part of the season soon, there's hope at the very least. What has happened is, for example, we have funding every year for a VIC, a Visitor Information Center, which runs at the, for the cat. And it's a very active spot. We hire students for that, it's, it's always a, a main kind of focal point for what goes on at the cat. So what happened there with the funding already in place, Bay Ferry's allowed us to put the VIC and the Funday Rose for those who are crossing from Digby to St. John. And so that is up and running. There's also been kind of a, a hope that we can concentrate, there, there, it's, it's one of those situations where you don't know what to do because you get caught in a, in a situation where you're in limbo. Do you, do you change everything and try to do heavier advertising within all of Nova Scotia? Or do you just wait for the season to start up? And so a little bit of what's going on is concentrating a little more, a little more on what happens in Nova Scotia. But the primary markets that we advertise as, as the group, is Yarmouth and Arcadian shores, is New England, and of course, it's also Ontario and Quebec and that area. And so that does hold on, we're holding the course for that in the hopes that everything will change. As a matter of fact, we're hosting some members of the radio community this weekend who are coming in for a radio takeover, which is going to be happening. They're from Portland and they're going to go across on the Digby, on the Digby boat and come down. And we're going to show them around and we usually get a lot of mileage out of that. They'll be showing up at Y95 on Saturday and they'll be, they'll be around and, you know, taking part in some of the things that are going on, going on a tour, a whole bunch of other things. So we're still hard at it and planning to get as far as we can under somewhat unhappy circumstances, I guess.
So, so the other thing we can do, every, every single one of us, is, is reach out to your friends and your family. I've had colleagues contact me from throughout the Atlantic provinces, actually a couple ministers, and said, you know what, we're, we understand what's going on right there, there may be a month or more delay, so we're going to do, they call it the staycation, right in Nova Scotia. So they're going to make their way to Yarmouth and, and we'll show them, show them the best of what we have. So we can do that.
I'll tell you what, your worship, the thing is, is that, and it's something I'm passionate about, you know that, we have so much here.
We do.
That it's, let's be honest, if we wanted to, we could stay here and just explore our area, you know, exploring your own backyard, Sandra Finney very eloquently puts it.
Yes.
And you're helping, you're helping your economy here because you're, you're staying local, but you're also having some really fantastic adventures. There's a lot going on here. And I think there's more going on here than what the general public realizes because we're not tourists in this area.
That's right.
And so we don't look at it with those same eyes. You look at it with fresh eyes, you see an awful lot.
That's right. So councillor Steve's nodding his head and we had that very discussion at, at the events meeting, that, that is, as opposed to sitting at the table as council members, that we take a step back and say, you know what, we're just citizens here. Either we live here or we're coming in, we're friends and family, and what do we want to know? And, and the answer was, we want to know every single thing that's going on in the community. And, and you know, we all know at this table that on any given day, there, there's a dozen things, at least a dozen things. So to get that all in one place and to advertise it and just to get it to a point where that's the go-to, right? When somebody asks, what is there going on? Because there, there, the, the mantra of there's nothing going on here is disappearing relatively quickly.
Words of the Statler brothers, don't tell me you've got nothing to do. There's a lot going on here. And anybody who says that there's nothing going on isn't looking very hard.
Yeah, that's very true. Deputy?
Yeah, I got a question, maybe to councillor Cleveland about YASTA, is, is we know that there was an increase last year, that we had the largest increase in the province with room capacities and is, is there, like the numbers being skewed a little maybe this year with, without the ferry running for the first month or two? How do the Airbnbs factor into that? Is there any, any, not concern, but is there any maybe concern about those numbers not being calculated in the formula? So you might have people coming down here, coming to an event like the tuna tournament or CFAS or the car show, that might have got something online, like an apartment or granny suite or a cottage. Just wondering how that goes in the calculations because we can't be the only one in the province with the same.
Dealing with that. And actually, there was a big movement in tie-ins, the tourism industry of Nova Scotia, the association, about Airbnbs. First off, they're looking for everybody to be on the same foot when it comes to regulations, of course. And that's, that's just basic. It's, it's, the basic analogy is the difference between a Uber and a taxi, you know, how one can, isn't regulated in the same way. And it's the same with Airbnbs, it's a whole different setup. But as someone who is trying to find definitive numbers in tourism, it is a real problem because there can be Airbnbs all over the place. And there are, in fact, I know of Airbnbs on my very street, a couple of them, as a matter of fact, and they are fairly busy. But those numbers aren't going to the same spots, they're not being monitored in the same way. And so that those numbers don't factor in in the way they should because they would tell a different story. So there is, there's two pieces to that. There's the, the regulatory piece and the, the reporting piece, and we're not getting those numbers, unfortunately. But that's something that tie-ins is kind of on an onward basis trying to correct.
Go ahead, councillor Hood.
I have a question about the earlier comment, councillor, the Lighthouse and YASTA. Has YASTA increased their staff or are they providing those services to, to the old Lighthouse from their existing staff? And does that in fact dilute what YASTA's supposed to do for the town? Just a little question.
Well, it's a big little question. No, they haven't increased, how do I put this so that it makes sense? They haven't increased staff as far as managerial staff goes. And as a matter of fact, no, they haven't increased, I can honestly say, no, they haven't increased staff at all. Because the way that the circumstances went, all staff at the Yarmouth Light are under the auspices of the municipality, now that I think my way through. YASTA has a management deal with, with the municipality that was okayed by all three groups.
For one year.
For one year. And that's it. And it was, it's kind of a, a transition and a kind of figuring out where they need to be situation. But it isn't really diluting anything. As a matter of fact, YASTA, how do I put it, put that part that it makes sense? As part of YASTA's mandate in many instances is, was, and is to develop different...
Experiences.
Experiences, yes. That's a, that's a good way to put it. Things like, for example, and I'll just throw this out there as, as an example, but take the foodie tour. So, so it was decided that a foodie tour was needed, that it was a good experience that would be done. And so for a period of time, under the auspices of YASTA, they, they pick it up, they, they kind of hire the people, they put everything together, they supply marketing to help out with that. And then once it's okay to, once it's surviving on its own, once it's going, you let it go. And so the approach with YASTA, theoretically at least, with the Lighthouse is a similar thing. It's a grander scale, but it's a similar thing. Where what's happening is they're marketing, they're kind of helping them out, running their way through the whole thing. All the employees, the students and all of that is done by, by the municipality, by Modi. But they kind of take an overview of it and after the end of the year, we'll move on from there.
So why is YASTA taking on this responsibility when a volunteer group was doing it for free?
Well, that's a...
Just a little question.
Well, that's, that's a bigger little question and one that I don't have an answer to because that's, that's more between the volunteer group and Modi than it is that we were approached, YASTA was... the volunteer group and Modi than it is that we were approached, YASTA was approached by Modi. It's not like YASTA.
So why did YASTA? Why did YASTA get sucked into dealing with Modi on this thing? That's what I want to know.
So what happened is, as partners, they came to us.
I don't mean sucked in, I mean, uh.
No, no. You're, you're good.
Alright.
You're good. You're good.
I was going to try to find a more polite word, but really.
You really did.
So, because we're partners in YASTA.
Yeah.
We sat at a table.
We decided to help out Modi.
We sat at a table and we said, because it's, it's the icon for the entire region.
It really is.
It is, yeah.
And, um, and honestly, the Friends of Light were, were doing an amazing job, so if we're going to, i- if there's going to be changes, then let's make sure everything's on track, and they had a one year, that's it, so that ends in.
Well, at the end of the season. Technically, it's not even a year.
Yeah.
Because it's a season.
That's right.
And a season isn't a year.
Yeah.
Well, I would have thought Modi, uh, got rid of the volunteers that were doing a great job, as Your Worship says, that they would have had the ability to go ahead and a plan to go ahead and, uh, manage this thing and get it going themselves. Apparently, they didn't, and they need it, yes, is that correct? I got that right? Thank you, Your Worship.
Yeah. Okay, now some lights off. So, was there a motion there?
No.
Alright, thanks, folks. Okay, so additions. So I have the Mariner Center, um, members, go ahead there, Counselor Cleveland.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, Mariner Center Board, uh, had a lot of people apply for it this time through as a matter of explanation. Plus, the board structure itself changed in that, uh, there, we are having a, a member of council who are, uh, going to be on the board, so it went from three citizens to two citizens. So there were five people for two spots. Five or six, actually, now that I think of it. And so it was decided that, uh, we would have interviews with everyone, just to, uh, give everyone a chance to speak to us before a decision was actually made. And so we, we conducted those today, uh, myself, the deputy mayor, and the mayor, and, uh, they were all very good, actually. Everyone was absolutely excellent. And so there is that, but that's a preface to my motion, which is that, uh, we, uh, accept the appointments of the two members of, uh, the board who are already there, and that being Mike Randall and Linda Gallagher. So I'd like to make that motion, please.
Uh, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just maybe one other, I'll make Your Worship's.
And you were there since I was here. Yeah, like Counselor Cleveland said, they were both excellent, and, uh, myself, I think one time, and then I think Wade and yourself another time, asked, uh, the people that were being interviewed if they would, uh, be in, interested in some other committees that the town has, has openings on, and they were open and receptive to that too, so, uh, the Mariner Center wasn't the only one that they're casting their eye on, but they just wanted to serve their community, and they said they would be interested in other opportunities that, uh, if they arose, so, uh, it was a good process today. I thought, I thought it worked out really well.
It was good. Counselor Hood?
So when you interviewed these people, did you ask them if they're committing, committed to putting beer and popcorn in the, in the stands at the Mariner Center?
Yes, we did. It was brought up.
Alright, that's good. I'm ready to vote.
Yes. I think he's having some fun today.
Big chips too, Cliff.
Yeah, chips. Okay. Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carries. Oh my gosh, what a bunch. Approval of invoices, please. Moved by Deputy Counselor Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carry. Date of next meeting? August the eighth. And I'm looking to, for a motion to adjourn, please. Okay, and we're going to go right into, it'll only take a couple minutes. We're going to do a water utility meeting. So Counselor Hood, do you want to do that from there? You want to come up here? Multitasker. Well, while you're signing that check, I will remind folks that Sea Fest begins this week. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That means the car show at the end of it. Much going on.
So a meeting come to water, this is a meeting of the Town of Yarmouth Water Utility, and, uh, we have one item on the agenda. So I have an inter-office memorandum to the C A O from Robert Chetwin, the chief operator, wastewater. And, uh, this is, uh, we do, we have lagoons at the treatment plant that have to be maintained and cleaned out once a year. And so, once a year, we conduct an annual water treatment plant lagoon maintenance de-watering pot project. And the project requires specialized equipment and operations, and we have secured an invited quote from the contractor that conducts the work for us each year. Contractor is very familiar with what is all, with all that's involved, and to the best of our knowledge, is the only organizations with ties in the maritimes that can execute this type of work with the type of specialized equipment we require. After reviewing this year's proposal and scope of work, it's recommended that we accept the estimated cost of the maintenance project of ninety-six thousand dollars from Terra Pure Environmental. This is money that will come from the water budget, not from the town budget, and it's money that's covered by the rates that each taxpayer pays when they pay their water and sewer, and sewer bill. And so it's budgeted for. Uh, this is a sole-source contract, but the explanation given is backed up here by the report. So I'd ask for a motion to approve this, uh, contract proposal from the start. Moved by, uh, Her Worship. Second to Counselor Barry. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Did you have a question?
You need a miss.
Did you have a question?
No, I said question, call the question.
Call the question. Questions called. Call for the motion. I got one vote. Motion's carried.
Motion to a chair, Mr. Chair. Okay, bud, motion to a chair.